All right, good evening. Welcome to the September 17, 2018, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call the meeting to order. And I will ask that you all rise, including our local Cub Scout, Den. What Den are you guys?
Thirty-eight oh five.
Thirty-eight oh five. In fact, thirty-five. They're gonna help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great God for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. We had a chance to sit down with these Scouts before the meeting and chat with them a little bit about city government and what we do here and how it all works. And they're very bright kids, and we appreciate you guys being here. All right, that'll take us to item three on the agenda, the Consent Docket. Counselors, questions or comments on the Consent Docket?
Motion to accept the Consent Docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. We have a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Item four, we don't have anyone signed up for public hearing or public comment, so we'll skip down to item six, public hearings. Item A, receive public comment regarding a request for a text amendment establishing regulations for medical marijuana facilities to Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article Five, Use Categories and Limitations, Division One, Sections 23-96, Definitions, to Article Five, Use Categories and Limitations, Division Three, New Section 23-115, Medical Marijuana, to Article Six, Land Use Classifications, Division Four, Sections 23-151, CS Commercial Shopping District, Section 23-152, CB Commercial Business District, Section 23-153, CG Commercial District, Section 23... Hmm, let me skip the line there. Section 23-153, CG Commercial General District, to Article Six, Land Use Classification, Division Five, Section 23-160, IL Light Industrial District, Section 23-161, IG General Industrial District, to Article Six, Land Use Classifications, Division Six, Section 23-170, A Agricultural District, to Appendix One, Form-Based Codes, Article Four, Section 4.110, 4.10, Architectural Provisions, Table 17, Specific Function and Use. Mr. Doorman, do we have good notice on this item?
Yes.
Mr. McNichol?
Paula Dennison, our Development Services Director, will respond to that long introduction.
And the ordinance title is yet to come.
Oh, good.
Mayor, thank you.
Get to read that again.
Yes. If you recall, at one of our previous meetings, the first reading of this ordinance, the public hearing and the first reading of this ordinance, adopting the places where the three types of medical marijuana facilities could be placed with specific use permits inside the city of Stillwater. After the first reading, an issue came to staff's attention, and we have since held the second reading in order for it to go back to the Planning Commission to get their input on resolution of the issue that arose, which was specifically allowing indoor commercial growers in the light industrial district. Originally, commercial growers with outside only and only allowed in the agriculture. What the ordinance is that you have on your agenda for second reading tonight, 3416, it does expand that to identify commercial growers as either indoor or outdoor, and to allow the indoor commercial grower within the industrial districts. Be happy to answer any questions.
Counselors, questions? Is there a provision in state law about where the medical marijuana crop can be grown? I had heard conflicting information, I don't know if we... About whether it has to be indoor or has to be outdoor, or is it open to any?
It's open to both.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Paula. I don't think we have anyone signed up for public hearing, but I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And without anyone signed up, I will close the public hearing and ask Paula for staff recommendations.
Planning Commission does send a recommendation of approval of this amendment for the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we'll get to that in Section Eight of the agenda. So we'll go ahead at this point and move on to Section Seven, General Orders. Item A, discussion of funds available for allotment to capital projects and request for special meeting to present identified capital projects and related funding sources for council approval. Mr. McNichol?
Well, I will actually present that information to you. Didn't prepare a report because we intend to ask you to set either a special meeting at some date future, certain in the future, or in visiting with staff today, we think we can present that information in about 30 minutes, depending on how much time council needs to ask questions. But let me start at the beginning, and we can kind of wrangle those details at the end, if that's okay.
Okay.
We have a strategic plan, and you all know that. And in fact, we will be reviewing that plan in January, I believe. And so about two months ago, as part of that, Melissa Reams, our Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer, set out to determine what we thought we should present to the council as a proper reserve for both the general fund of the city of Stillwater budget and the SUA. And that what seems to be a simple subject turned into a two-month kind of investigation of things financial with the city of Stillwater. We find ourselves immersed, because of government regulations, in two different finance or accounting methods that are used and that are required of municipalities used for government reporting purposes, and that is GASB, which is Government Accounting Standards Board, and GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. And what we do in terms of reporting is kind of dictated by those two groups, and that's what we're expected to do, to report to the state. I can see this is fascinating for the Scouts. So, one of the things that does not happen with those two accounting principles, well, let me back up and say that we work on a cash accrual basis. In other words, expenses and revenue are booked in the month that they occur, and so are receivables. So, we made this determination that no one has, to our knowledge, has ever kind of drawn a line on the calendar and said, if the city of Stillwater goes out of business on this date, how much money would be left if we just quit doing business? And that's the simplest way to explain what we set out to do. And in looking at cash balances and at... We've had some interesting conversations with people that were here in the past, both Marcy Alexander and Dan Blankenship, about funds that we have found that we believe we can trace where the money came from, we have no idea why they were set up. Funds that were set up, what we believe to be reserves in the past, that are tied to the cash balances of the SUA, and to frankly, the general fund, that contributed to an investment account that's existed since 2011 and never been touched. But part of that, the majority of that $20 million, is $15 million that is part of the SUA's cash reserve. So then we set out to look at the RSF. And the RSF, the Rate Stabilization Fund, is designed to do two things. One, to keep electric rates stable during times of uncertainty in electric charges, and two, to provide an account that completes capital projects for the electric utility that are forecast out five years. And recently, you have approved purchase of some transformers, which was about a $4 million project, and then AMI last week, four million of which comes out of the RSF and four million out of Water Capital. And so if you follow those projects through the five years, and you make an assumption of a routine or regular deposit into the RSF that is frankly, significantly less than what we've been doing lately, we can finish those capital projects and still, at the end of a five-year term, have $5 million, or excuse me, a $6 million balance in that rate stabilization fund. Which leads me to tell you that we will be recommending, when we make this full presentation, a policy on the RSF, the Rate Stabilization Fund, placing either a cap on it and having a policy on how funds are deposited in the RSF. And you're probably sitting there asking yourself, well, why in the world are you talking about the RSF? Well, another pot of money that we found that was in SUA was a thing called an undesignated fund, or non-designated, non-assigned, okay, non-assigned funds. And in that fund existed, as you know, there is a transfer policy that the council approves any transfer, starting last year, that's made from the SUA to the general fund, and that's based on a recommendation. Well, at the end of the year, when everything's finished, and all that accounting's done, and generally about this type of year, so you can see the difference between year ending July 30th, and we don't have any idea how last year ended up until recently, the last week or so, how cash accounting affects what you're able to project in the future. So at any rate, in this non-allocated or non-assigned fund, it existed $7.4 million. And in looking back on what that $7.4 million was, is the savings that the general fund has generated over the last two years. It has been the policy of the city of Stillwater that if there is a fund balance in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year, that that returns to the SUA. For some reason, that was not returned to the RSF, it was left in this non-designated account, and so we ran the numbers on the capital fund, and that $7.4 million will not affect the ending balance if it's put to use for the citizens of Stillwater, and that is what we believe needs to happen. We have streets that are in horrible state of repair, this is kind of a windfall, we will have another one at the end of this year. At any rate, the purpose of this meeting is for us to more formally present to you where that money's come from, what we have in reserves, what our recommended reserve is for both, and we have it now, for both the SUA and the general fund, and we also believe that we need, you approved maybe last meeting or meeting before, a waste management study, rate study. We think we need one for both electric and for water. And before the public becomes concerned that we're suddenly wanting to raise rates, the other thing that we have determined that we're going to recommend to you is that the CPI addition that's made to the electric bills every January does not happen this year, that it is held in abeyance until we complete a rate study, assuming that the trustee is determined to make that steady. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. That's a really brief description of what turned out to be, if I had not been involved before we started this, I would be now, because it truly was a very frustrating journey through, why don't we do this like a business that knows where their receivables are? And it's not a criticism of anybody, it's just how it's always been, and it is difficult, very, very difficult, to predict what those cash balances are going to be three months from now, because you have such big variables, two and three and four million and sometimes more, electric bills during the month, and all kinds of variables that enter into this whole process. So, questions?
Counselors?
What are you asking us, I mean, comments on this or scheduling? You said we have to schedule a meeting to...
Yes, we can either do it at a regular meeting where we have a relatively light agenda, like tonight, but we were not ready. To do the complete presentation, Monty is still working on some projections in terms of what paving we might be able to do, and, and, we would like to do it sooner than later, because if we release money to Monty to go forth and pave roads, we need to get on that, because there's only so much we can do for the remainder of the fiscal year. So we've given him a target that we would recommend to the, and he has given us a target of what he thinks he could do in the amount of about $6 million. And the rest of that, any surplus from last year, well, from the, from June 30th, excuse me, yeah, June 30th, end of last year's fiscal budget to now, that cash and the balance of what we have available now would be able to be placed in capital needs projects in the next budget year. Clear as mud?
But we won't know what that amount is until we close the books later in next year.
It's somewhere between 10.5 and 12.5.
Okay. The one question I had, this unassigned fund, has that been closed?
No.
That account?
No, it's still there. That's where money resided until it was transferred back into the RSF.
Right, but the part of the problem was is that we didn't know that that money was there. So I guess my question is, is what, if we have the RSF, what do we need an extra unassigned account for?
These funds were, and Finance Director Cluck is here in the background too, so she may jump in here with us, Melissa Reams, Chief Financial Officer. These funds were administratively assigned in accounting ease, assigned means, they are very loosely earmarked for future occurrences. We haven't added to this fund at all, and this has probably been there for two or three years, I would imagine, so it has been sitting there not being deployed. And that, that is concerning to us as we're looking at cash. We're trying to evaluate all the cash that's out there and ascertain again, what do we need to keep in reserve, what's logical to keep in a reserve, regardless of where, where the pots reside, and deploy the remaining cash. That assigned fund, which is a loose designation in our accounting ease, is, is sitting there. It hasn't done anything, and so we're coming back in and evaluating, does it have a purpose as a reserve? I think we're kind of getting to the point where we think, no, it really doesn't have a purpose as a reserve, because we have such a large balance in the RSF. So that's kind of where that is. It's not necessarily money we've ever lost track of, we know, we know it's there, we were waiting to figure out where it needed to be deployed.
While we're talking about the RSF, people are, I'm sure people that are listening to this wonder, you know, why in the heck do you need that much money? When you consider one transformer is somewhere north of a million dollars, and those can go bad. And our electric bill to GRDA runs in excess of how much a year, do you recall? It's a lot.
It's a lot. Kristi may have a better guess.
It's $2 million on average.
Right.
So, just to sort of summarize, I mean, it sounds like the issue here, one, a big part of the issue here is a lack of policy around how big these reserves need to be.
I would, I would say yes.
And a lack of policy around what happens when our reserve funds hit the rational limit, where do we put those, where do we put those money? So we've kind of just been sitting and waiting to make those decisions. We've looked at this and said, we need to do something else with it, we need to put policy in place for the future about how this reserve fund gets, gets built up and spent, and then we get to decide how to, you know, what to do with money that's, that's there now that we don't need for reserve, or we don't think we need for reserve.
Correct.
So what, do we have a recommendation on when we should do this meeting, or do you want us to?
Because it will be, I'm guessing, probably an hour in duration. We can add it to a future agenda soon, or we can call a special meeting, it's council's choice.
Do we have a third meeting or a study session scheduled in October?
We have study sessions booked until January, February, actually, February.
I didn't know if it would make sense to...
Booked with topics for each of them?
Yes.
Are any of them short?
One of them is canceled because I think you wore the same name.
Right. But...
That's the October issue.
Yeah. Special events?
That's a regular...
Okay, it's on the regular agenda, I couldn't remember.
What's on, what's on the study session next week?
That's your joint meeting with the...
Planning, and...
I don't know if that's something we could...
Mr. Doorman may be able to give us an idea on that.
We can cancel that if you want to go ahead and do this now.
We've canceled that several times, and we have them all ready to come.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I can talk fast.
Do you have any idea how the second regular meeting in October looks, in terms of?
I don't think it's too heavy. I could go look at it, but I can't narrow it down.
I'd say if we, if we can set it for that second.
What would the date of that be?
Fifteen or...
Does that give you guys enough time to look at things and come to us with recommendations?
If we want to do the same this year, earlier with that, so that we did engineer work on the new... We got, if you wanted to do a couple bridges, we could get those out early.
We have two bridges that are in pretty poor shape, and the total on that's $3 million. So we have $3 million fine, and we think we can find that in a hurry, so...
Well, I think it's important enough to where we add it to one of the meetings in October then.
Okay. You want us to just...
I will be gone the 15th.
You will be?
Mm-hmm. October 1st.
What else did we say we had the first? The special events? Can we move that to the 15th?
Yes.
And put this on the first?
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Sure.
October 1st.
October 1st.
Monty, does that work for you?
We don't need a motion or something on this, do we? Well, we appreciate the work that you and Melissa and the finance team and the city staff has done in certainly all the budget, hard budget work we've done over the last couple of years to make sure our spending is in control and we're not getting out ahead of ourselves, but also in this, going back and trying to sort through years of, you know, where policy was and what happened. And I think we, as a council, I hope we're all committed to making sure, moving forward, we have the policies in place that we need, so that we're not two years out going, wait a second, what were we going to do with this, and what was the idea back then? And so, yeah, we need, we need to get this issue solved.
Well, I would be remiss, Mary, in not complimenting our employees without them listening to our message the last couple of years about, because we, at one point, were in $1.8 million in the hole. And in a manner of three, roughly three years, with their cooperation and with increased workload, because we've gone from 600 to 522 employees, and they have assisted in being able to save that amount of money, and that's not, that's not small change.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Thank you. Anything further on that, counselors?
No.
All right. We will move on to Section Eight A, Ordinances on Second Reading. Ordinance number 3416, and ordinance amending the city code of the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, Chapter 23, titled Land Development Code, by amending Article Five, Use Categories and Limitations, Division One, Generally, Section 23-96, Definitions, by adding the terms Medical Marijuana Commercial Grower, Medical Marijuana Dispensary, and Medical Marijuana Processing. Amending Division Three, Use Limitations, by adding new Section 23.115, Medical Marijuana. Amending Article Six, Land Use Classifications, Division Four, Commercial Districts, Section 23-151, CS Commercial Shopping District, Section 23-152, CB Commercial Business District, and Section 23-153, CG Commercial General District, by providing for specific use. Amending Article Six, Land Use Classifications, Division Five, Industrial Districts, Section 23-160, IL Light Industrial District, and 23-161, IG General Industrial District, by providing for specific use. Amending Article Six, Land Use Classifications, Division Six, Agriculture District, Public District and University Districts, Section 23-170, A Agricultural District, by providing for specific use. Amending Appendix One, Form-Based Codes, Article Four, General Provisions, Section 4-4.10, Architectural Provisions, Table 17, Specific Function and Use, and Providing for Separability. Counselors, this is the amended ordinance that we talked about before, that adds growers to industrial districts as well.
Indoor only, correct?
Yes.
I did find the new Section 23-115, just a little bit confusing. It says, number one, indoor, indoor commercial grower and outdoor commercial grower allowed only in the A, agriculture, with a special use permit, and then number two is indoor commercial grower allowed only in the IL, industrial light, et cetera. To me, I mean, it was just confusing, because it sounds like it's allowed only in the agriculture, and then the next line says it's allowed only in the IL, industrial light.
Since the rationale behind this is because we're talking about two types of commercial grower and three different zoning districts. One type allowed in two districts, the other two types allowed in one district, so it was, it was more easy, simple for, for staff to separate these. In the ag, you can have the indoor or outdoor, and in the industrial, you can only have the indoor. That's the purpose of, of how that reads.
How come you didn't put number one, indoor commercial grower or outdoor commercial grower allowed only in agriculture?
At this point in time, I'm not so sure that you couldn't have both own the same piece of property in an agriculture zone. That's yet to be seen, what comes out of the state. That's a simple correction, if that's...
Well, you know, I'm not planning on using this myself, it's just confusing to me.
Yeah, I think, I think just the, the only in one there, because indoor commercial grower could be either in one or two, but it says only...
Well, we could strike the words only in, or actually only...
Just only out of one, and, and out of two, because indoor commercial grower is allowed in either agriculture or industrial.
I think that's the most elegant language fix to take, to strike only.
Strike the word only in 23-115, Sub Two.
Sub one and sub two.
Okay, I got you.
I think that's probably just a holdover, because in the first version of this, it said only for the first one, and then, yeah. So, yeah, if we strike only for both of those lines, it, does that make sense?
That'll help me.
So how does this work in this process, then?
For the second reading draft with the following amendment, Section 23-115, Subsections One and Subsections Two, the word only shall be stricken.
Is there such a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3416 with the noted edits. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance 3416 is adopted with the described edits.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item B, ordinance number 3417, an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Stillwater, Oklahoma, Chapter 12, titled Businesses, by amending Article Four, Itinerant Merchants and Peddlers, Section 12-117, Definitions, by revising the definition of it... of itinerant merchant, providing for separability and declaring an emergency. Councilors.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3417, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the ordinance is adopted. Item C, ordinance number 3418, yes, sir.
An emergency clause attached to that.
We did. So we need a separate motion on the emergency clause for 3417.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 3417, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the emergency is declared. Item C, ordinance number 3418, an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Stillwater, chapter 29, total motor vehicles and traffic by amending Article One in general, section 29-1, definitions by revising the definition of bicycle, electric assisted bicycle and motorized bicycle, adding new definitions for the terms moped, motor scooter or motorized scooter and motor driven cycle. Amending section seven bicycles and motorized scooters by renaming it bicycles and nonlicensed electrical and motorized personal conveyances. Amending section 29-201 generally and section 29-211 riding on sidewalks. Amending Article Eight motorcycles and motor scooters by renaming it motorcycles, motor driven cycles and mopeds. Amending section 29-222 required equipment. Amending section 29-223 clinging to vehicles. Deleting section 29-224 handlebars. Amending section 29-225 passing between lanes. Amending section 29-226 riding on sidewalks. Amending section 29-227 headgear. Deleting section 29-228 restrictions on time of operation. And amending section 29-229 special speed limitation, providing for separability and declaring an emergency. Councilors?
Motion to adopt ordinance 3418.
Second.
Do the emergency second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 3418, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the ordinance is adopted. Is there a motion on the emergency clause?
Motion to declare an emergency on 3418.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare an emergency on ordinance 34, excuse me, 3418, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the emergency is declared. Thank you. That gets our scooter stuff taken care of for now. Item nine, reports from officers and boards, Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. McNichol?
Yes, sir. W E B Construction will soon begin construction of a water line on Country Club Road between 37th and 44th. The new water line will connect two dead ends that are 690 feet apart. This will create a water line loop that will improve both reliability of service and the quality of drinking water in this rural area. Construction is expected to finish by the end of December.
Excellent, thank you. Councilor Zanotti?
Yes, construction has reached substantial completion on the industrial substation expansion project and the substation was recently returned to service. Many of our customers in the northeast part of the city are now powered by this more robust and secure substation. To see more project updates on the city's website under current projects, which is a great resource, by the way.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Sure, this Thursday, it's kind of like the utility, electric utility Olympics.
Yes.
The Boomer Lake Park this Thursday will be the 2018 MISO Line Workers Rodeo. The event begins with an opening ceremony at 7:30 a.m. Competition begins around 8 a.m. and finishes around 1 p.m. More details are on the city's website. I think our line workers have won this competition a number of times.
They have.
They have. And I've not seen it in person, but I've seen videos of it. Looks kind of cool.
It does.
Yeah.
I'm going to be out there on Thursday morning, so I'm looking forward to seeing.
Are you going to climb up a pole?
I don't think I will. You know, my dad worked at CERC forever and like my first few Halloween costumes were being aligned because those guys were awesome. So I'm excited to see it.
He was still six feet tall.
Counselor Wedlake?
So the city has a list and video with answers to frequently asked questions regarding the bird ride and other dockless scooters. This includes answers about where you are allowed to ride them, how to observe traffic signals and how to use crosswalks, et cetera. A reminder that scooters are allowed on city sidewalks except for sidewalks in downtown Stillwater or otherwise known as the business district. If you want more information, go to the city's website at stillwater.org and search for scooters. There's a frequently asked questions document on the city's website, so.
That new video is very helpful. I don't know if you guys have seen it yet online, but it's.
It is really cool.
I'm disappointed that it was not Mr. McNichol.
Whoever rode that thing down Duck Street was brave.
Yeah, I mean, there's a dump truck that goes by at one point. It was a little nerve wracking.
It is.
It's a good video.
A good reminder to observe traffic signals.
Exactly.
Wear a helmet.
And she was wearing a helmet.
Please wear a helmet, it was good stuff.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes. Residents are encouraged to apply for the Stillwater Reinvestment Plan Implementation Policy Committee. All applicants must be a resident inside the city limits and applications are due by this Friday, September 21st at 5 p.m. More information about the committee and the application process are on the city's website. I've noticed too that we've got it out on our social media as well to connect to that, so I really encourage our community and citizens to consider putting in their application.
Thank you.
I wanted to also, Mr. McNichol, Norman sent us earlier today, there's an event happening downtown on Friday with the OSU Architecture students. They're doing, it's parking day where they'll be kind of doing a kind of a guerrilla park installments in downtown in some of our parking spaces. So just to encourage folks to come out, I think it'll be really cool. It sounds, I saw we got a little YouTube video. It looks like a really fun opportunity to interact with our OSU students, but also to kind of understand a little bit about kind of what that urbanism looks like, so. I think it's 8 a.m. to 8 p.m., is it all day?
Yes. Yeah, excellent, thank you. Well, in light of Counselor Jaloski's announcement or news, when we get done, we're down to item 11, appointments and would like to provide some additional time for folks to apply for the reinvestment plan committee, so I'm going to ask that we postpone that appointment item to our next meeting so that we can provide plenty of time for people to apply for the committee. So please do get on if you're interested and apply for that committee and we'll take a look at those appointments next week. All right, item 12, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater City Council meeting, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater City Council meeting is adjourned. That takes us over to the Stillwater Utilities Authority Meeting for September 17, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for questions or comments on the consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item five, consider funding a feasibility study to determine if Stillwater should create a community owned and operated broadband utility, SUA-18-36. Mr. McClain is going to give us this report.
Well, I have one slide to show you and I'll get that out of the way right at the beginning. This kind of goes to the bulk of the things that we've looked at in terms of doing this. You had an email from Dan Blankenship to the trustees in March talking about how in looking at smart energy, we discovered that a lot of communities with electric utilities are getting into the community broadband business as well. And there seems to be a synergy and this is provided by the Institute for Local Self-Reliance. And you can see all of the communities that have done this. So it's not something where we're stepping out on the cutting edge. It's been done before and we've talked to a lot of these communities about this in doing our research. One of the things that was contained in that email that we think we need to do is to do a study, a feasibility study prior to moving forward because the capital costs of doing something like this could be fairly intensive. So we want to make sure that this is going to, this is going to work. We sent out a request for qualifications. We received 13 responses from firms that do these types of feasibility studies. We evaluated those and identified the top three. And before we proceed to asking them to provide us with detailed proposals and scope of services, we wanted to make sure that we had the budget in place to move forward and that's estimated to be $150,000. The study would tell us things such as whether or not there's a market for this in Stillwater, what the capital and operating costs would be, and then the revenue potential, which is going to be important because at the very least it's got to break even, preferably it's got to make revenue. Benefits for this would be revenue, but the other benefit is to have a speed of 1 gigabyte per second up and 1 gigabyte per second down synchronized or synchronized somehow. And I'm going to let people who know this stuff better explain that kind of thing. This is significantly faster than anything that's available in Stillwater right now. So it would be, it would be a benefit both to businesses, potential future industrial customers, technology driven businesses and residents. The possible service models would include full retail, that's where we provide everything. We would be basically an internet service provider such as Southern Link, AT&amp;T, Pro Value, are now in Stillwater. And then it runs all the way through several different possible service models down to open access, which would be where we basically provide the fiber and private companies pay us to use that fiber to provide the service. A couple of things to consider is that if we went with the full access model, we would be in direct competition potentially with current service providers in Stillwater. And then the cost of the study is another consideration because that's $150,000 that may in the end tell us that this doesn't make sense. It may tell us that it would be great, it may also tell us that we don't want to get into this business. Our recommendation is that we fund this study from the SUA contingency and that we go ahead and request proposals from the top three firms that responded to the request for qualifications. Now, the entire extent of my knowledge on this subject has just been conveyed to you in this presentation. I started out knowing, knowing nothing and now I've progressed to knowing very little, but I've had a lot of backup through this process from IT. So Brad Stewart and Billy Pomisano are here and can help answer questions on this subject in much greater detail and they'll know what that synchronized gigabyte up and down is all about. So I'll open it up to questions.
We're going to ask you questions?
Or you can ask the people who know stuff.
You just told us everything.
Just depends on what the question is.
Gigabyte or gigabit?
Bit.
Fair enough, all right. Gigabyte would be pretty roughly eight times faster than gigabit, right?
Did I say byte? I meant bit.
How did you choose the top three companies?
We had a series of criteria in the RFQ and I will. We basically looked at background experience, responses to all of the items that were listed in the potential scope of services, which included things such as experience doing market studies, experience in other communities, references, whether or not they had experience in partnerships with other entities such as we might partner with Oklahoma State University, we might partner with CREC, we might partner with a private entity in Stillwater. We asked them for experience in inventory and evaluating existing, the existing system in Stillwater because we do have a basic backbone of fiber optics, as I understand it. So it was any of the things that related to what we might need to know in this feasibility study. We also evaluated them based on a proposed project schedule. So we wanted to know kind of how, how fast can we get this done? And when will we have the answers that we're looking for? And then, of course, references.
I did look up a city in Iowa, Cedar Rapids, and it's smallish, a little bit smaller than we were, we are, I think, when they started their program. And of course, they're, on their website, they're all glowing about what this has done. But they did not have any server in their small rural town. How does it work when we already have all these other companies?
That's been one of the big questions that we've had is whether, whether this is something that typically goes in rural areas where they don't have a lot of options. But we've also looked at, there is at least one other community in Oklahoma, which is Salasaw? Salasaw, Fort Collins, Colorado, and several other Colorado communities that have other options, but they opted to go ahead and try to do this anyway. So it's been across the board. And that's one of the big questions we have is would this fly in Stillwater or not? And that's one of the things we need to know from the study.
Wasn't this the big deal a couple of years ago when President Obama came to do rant in the Chickasaw Nation?
Come on up here.
I was trying to get, I mean, I was trying to get Billy up here because.
And believe me when I tell you, I have as much, if not more enthusiasm about this project than the last project.
What makes it so exciting for you?
This, to me, this is no different than when someone sat around the house 100 years ago and decided, hey, you know, it'd be really nice to have electric service inside our house. Now, the difference between this situation to me and a situation like that is we've had the ability to access the internet prior to this. However, when we talk about availability of service, quality of service, as well as where we rank in the rest of, compared to the rest of the world, the U.S. is not a leader in that. And what you've seen a lot in the news recently, net neutrality is a really big deal. It's allowing people to have control over their vision for the future and how they stay interconnected with the rest of the world. It's just a basic question of, do we want to lead the way and have the ultimate decision in the path that we take? Or do we want to let others help us on that, on that path? To me, this is a community based project that has a direct effect on not only the citizenry, but businesses and the university. The university has already went down this road and works with a state agency called OneNet and they have two fiber backbones that come in, one from Langston and one from Tulsa. And they thrive on this. They would not be one of the top tier quality universities in the country had they not had access to a network like this. And I think not only between the citizenry, but the potential for business is a fantastic thing for this community. Again, not being from here, I really want to see this community grow. I would love to do whatever we can to be at the forefront of what it means to be in Oklahoma.
When you talk about internet, I think about internet. But are all of our contracts, like with Southern Link, our TV, phone, internet, high speed internet, would, this system would be absolutely comparable to that?
The internet service would be, yes. We had internal discussions about other services, Salasaw being our closest sister city, I guess, in this discovery process. They offer the whole thing, telephone, video service, all of that. That's a little bit more than I think, I believe any of us really want to get involved in because there's a lot more FCC regulations and just way more than. Because the issue at this point isn't, isn't so much the video service, it's just access to information, connectivity to the rest of the world.
So, I mean, the idea here is a fiber network that hits every house and every business in Stillwater?
That the, it depends on what avenue the council chooses to take. We can do anything from essentially setting up the fiber and like I said, letting other companies come in and just provide access over our backbone and infrastructure to we do it all.
So we would bill and collect for internet services and sort of like.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But the study.
But the study would look at and give us an assessment or analysis of those options, those choices, kind of the pros and cons of each of those, some of the options that you guys are talking about.
And does it, I mean, will the feasibility study include discussions with outside folks in town, other businesses? I mean, is it a full scale from that perspective?
One of the main points in the request for qualifications that we wanted to address is finding the partners and including them.
I can tell you that there are people here tonight, and having very brief discussions with them, anywhere from just citizens to employees of the city, as well as business owners, which are a few here in the crowd, very much would like to see where this would go.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think it's an issue. I mean, the idea of better, more reliable, more dispersed connectivity to a high-speed internet is, it's difficult to see a downside from just that general idea, certainly from a business perspective, an economic development perspective, being able to provide that to businesses as they come to town is a huge deal. So, I mean, the idea of figuring out, is this something we can do, seems like a pretty good thing for us to figure out. I mean, if we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and come back and say, this really isn't a good idea for Stillwater, that's fine, but it certainly seems to me to be the kind of investment because of the upside in terms of what would happen if we are able to make it work. So appreciate your work at this point and the information tonight. Trustees, further questions, comments? Is there a recommendation from staff? I didn't let you guys give...
We recommend that we proceed with the feasibility study, take the funding from the S U A contingency.
Thank you. Trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, S U A dash eighteen dash thirty-six is approved, and we're looking forward to seeing the results of the study.
About how long do you think it will be before the...
Actually, yeah. So we're going to pick three first, and then we're going to...
We've already picked the three.
Okay, then we're going to...
We've picked the top three, so the next thing we're going to ask them to do is submit detailed proposals, and we'll get a better idea of nailing down the cost. The hundred and fifty thousand was based on an estimate that we got talking to some of the respondents.
Okay. But then you'll come back and we'll approve...
Yes.
The final vendor before we...
Did they give you an estimate of what the, how long the study would take?
There were ranges from six to eighteen months, so depends on which one we wind up going with.
Thank you.
We do have very good choices.
Good. Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of responses in the first place to be able to narrow down.
The top three have done Fort Collins and some other...
Fort Collins, Longmont, Springfield, Missouri, Chattanooga, as well as Salasaw helped, or one of them helped with Salasaw. One is an international company that's done things not only in the U.S., but New Zealand and Australia.
One of the questions I'm definitely going to ask when we get to that next stage is how many times have they not found it feasible?
Yes.
Right? Because it's one of those things where, oh, yeah, we did a feasible study, it's feasible every time somehow.
That was actually one of the things that we talked about in terms of evaluating the responses, is that the ones that came out on top were companies that only do this, and we had others who engineer the systems, others who provide supplies, and also do the feasibility studies, so we wanted to make sure that whatever company we wound up picking to do this was, didn't have an interest beyond just determining whether it was feasible, they weren't going to sell us things afterwards, or engineer our network, or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item B, discussion of funds available for allotment. This is the sister item of the council agenda, correct?
Indeed, because it was on, what we were talking about crossed both budgets, we put it on both agendas.
So we'll make sure that there's an S U A agenda item on October first as well to discuss this.
Right.
All right, thank you. Reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. McNichol?
No items here.
Trustees?
No.
That takes us to item eight. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you.
This is...
Wow. Can we just not?